We do, and it was already way back though.
Welcome, everybody, to the regular school committee meeting of April 8th, 2014. Calling the meeting to order at 6:02. First item on the agenda, as always, is the consent agenda. If I don't see any objections, we will consider the minutes from March 25th, 2014, as well as the warrants from April 14th, 2014, approved. Great. Next on the agenda, moving right along, is correspondence. There were a couple of items. Who had them? Lorraine, you had one, I think.
I had one with a couple of items on it. I think the two that are relevant to discuss are the report cards didn't have an honors indicator on them, and that was a concern.
I just had a question. Was this all referencing Sawyer School or?
This was referencing Sawyer School. But then when it came up, I noticed that it wasn't on the high school one either.
Luther Burbings, Luther Burbings has it.
That it is.
Yeah, right. So this has to do with the standards-based report card. Because each of the middle schools and the high school has a different calculation methodology, so they couldn't put it on the one report card that they were all using. It just, I think we just didn't close the loop in terms of how then the individual schools would communicate that back out to folks. So we closed the loop, but my opinion.
But then the other concern was during the MCAS breakfast that the district provides. Like, you know, I've got to be fair to people. The cereal boxes were past the expiration date. And the concern was, it's not the first time there've been other food items that are past the expiration date. But I know, Michael, you got the same thing, so.
So that wasn't, that's not a district event. That was specific to the school.
Oh.
And as it was reported back to me, it's not that they were expired. It was best used by, and the date was right after the end of the MCAS. So the person who arranged all that took care of talking to that parent.
Perfect.
Making that. But that was a school-based purchase, not a district purchase.
Okay, and I'm trying to see if I have more. I think that's it. Oh, I did. Can we set all the clocks in the high school to the correct time?
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah.
That was so.
Can we set all my clocks to the correct time? And I mean, like, it's not like it's off by an hour. Some of them are off by six hours.
Oh.
Yeah.
I've been battling this.
Really?
Since I.
Oh, it's really.
I just can't, we can't get.
Why?
There's something wrong with the system and the electronics. I think the only solution, really, at this point is to tear out what's, well, tear out what's there, put in.
Put that on the list.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is it, was it all connected? Does that make sense?
I don't know enough specifics about it. I mean, I have, every year in August, I point that out because I don't want to go into the auditorium and not have that clock right. And we get it, we get it going for August, but by the, by now, it's just, they're all back in the, with daylight savings time hits, it just makes me go worse.
Worse, yeah. And one last thing, and then I'll, let's be quiet. I had a parent today contact me that there seems to be a, this is the second parent, but this one was really concerned. There's a lot of kids doing snuff at the high school. And what is snuff?
Tobacco?
Tobacco?
Tobacco.
What is the, I mean, we have subs, you can't, you can't smoke on campus.
You can't have tobacco.
I would assume you can't have that either.
Yeah.
But apparently, what she said was, the kids are all doing it. So I don't know that. I haven't seen it. I haven't been there enough, but just something to.
Does that come with the baseball season, maybe? I don't know.
No.
No, I think it's, I don't think it's just a seasonal thing.
I have not found anybody in my tours of the school, but I'll ask around. It's not a lot.
Even adult, I mean, even legal kids, you can't do that on the program.
Right.
Tobacco.
It's tobacco.
Right. So anyway, just sharing with love.
Could be gum, but.
I don't think brown gum that people spit.
Yeah.
It's disclosed. It's disgusting. It's very popular in teenage kids. Definitely. I don't know if popular is the word.
Any other items of correspondence?
Yes.
Yes, Julie.
I was contacted by 12 parents via phone call in concerns of art grades at Luther Burbings. I, my first response was, did you go through the proper protocol? Did you talk to the teacher? Did you talk to the principal? And they all assured me they had.
Specifically art? Is that what you said?
Specifically art. The prob, their concern is that several of their children, and I have to say, this has been going on, and I think you both can agree, years.
Years.
That kids who are really good students A and, you know, maybe 1B students are getting Cs and R and keeping them off honor roll. So, and these, you know, so it's definitely a concern. And the quote from the teacher when met with the parent, and I, they assured me this was a quote, is they can no longer take class participat- participation or effort into account when they are being graded. And art, that's a little bit disturbing because, I mean, art is very subjective, and if you're doing the work and you're trying your best, but you're just not good, then you should get a good grade. I mean, that's my personal opinion, but I think for years, this has been going on, that, and these are kids who get A's, so to get a C is really devastating for me. It's supposedly keeping them off honor roll, although our little yellow envelope says A or above in core subjects is honor roll.
I was going to say, it was supposed to keep them down?
Well, we haven't made, we're, we're working on that piece now, going forward. Right now, it's the, whatever their system is currently in their school. So I just spoke to Mr. Burbings about an art-specific question, but it wasn't that necessarily. So I'll talk with him.
Yeah, I mean, and they said they could get many more parents to call me, and I said, okay, that, well, okay, I get the point, I'll deliver the message.
So part of what, you know, we've been working on for a number of years now is to have all of our teachers use rubrics to score work. And so I know that a number of the art teachers and music teachers are using those rubrics to score based on the principles of art, and their artists and their expectations for art that are not subjective. And so that's what they're using more of, instead of just using participation or effort, which is a very loose.
But this isn't a new issue.
No, it doesn't sound like it's specific to your school. But maybe the, the art teacher is starting to use the rubrics this year more, and that's why more students are not scoring the way they had previously.
Can the parents see the rubric?
Absolutely.
Because one of the comments was, your child's not good at shading. I mean, I know one of my kids wasn't, we, we get Bs in art. The phase get Bs, 85 straight across the board, no matter what kid you are. That's just what that is. So, and he's left-handed, so he was horrible at shading because his whole finger was smudged. But, so I think, you know, it's just, I mean, I'd like, I think the parents would feel good to see the rubric and to see the, it's always good to stay after for extra help in art. I mean, not that I'm saying art isn't important, but these are kids that aren't do, you know, are slacking, not doing their homework, not doing, they're good students.
Kids stay after art a lot.
Yeah, they stay after for art. Really?
A lot, a lot. I could stay after art.
Mine, I would stay after all of the time.
You could stay after a lot for art, just to try to make the grade.
Just to make the grade?
Yeah, just to try to at least get a B, so you stay on honor roll.
Is that a high school teacher? Middle school?
Middle school. So is it safe to say that we're reevaluating the standards for what's honor roll and what's not?
That is absolutely, yes, because we're all involved.
I think it would be really reassuring for everybody to hear that that is indeed happening.
That is definitely happening. And we want a system that's a 6 through 12 system.
Oh, good. I think, I think it needs to, needs a little work.
Yeah, it definitely does.
That's great. And maybe we'll hear back from you in a future meeting.
I think by May, there are May meetings. We should have a proposal that we want to bring forth and.
Okay. Great.
Yep.
Thank you.
So, I know we're not talking about honor roll right now, but, I mean, I've had conversations from people in Yale that were concerned about the honor roll conversations at all levels. So there's going to be a discussion across the board, like, all three towns?
All three.
Would it be typical?
All three towns and the high school would be identical.
Really?
Yes.
That's awesome.
So, but as it stands right now, art can keep you up honor roll in the middle school?
Each of the schools is slightly different, but yes.
I thought.
Because at one point, it couldn't.
I called.
Yeah.
And they said it couldn't. But that was, like, a couple of years ago. I called.
Is art considered a core subject?
It is not considered a core subject.
So on that little yellow envelope that says, the one that I just signed in return, says A or above in core subjects, you're on honor roll.
Right. I don't know specifically. I have to say, because each one is different, so.
Are all the yellow envelopes different in the schools? Is it?
I don't even know if my two yellow envelopes are the same. I, to be honest.
Yeah.
I've never seen anything like that on an envelope.
Yeah.
Oh, I read it too. I read on the yellow envelope.
We don't have the honors.
No, we don't have the honors.
So it must be different. We might want to consolidate yellow envelopes if the.
Well.
But I think we'll be getting away with the.
Yeah, the whole.
The whole honor roll and process is being reevaluated, then that problem should, that inconsistency should go away.
Right.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks, Julie. Any other correspondence? Lynn?
We have one from Stowe, concerned about extending kindergarten to 12 o'clock with some morning warrants. Well, warrant, actually, billboards, I'm not inviting from the kindergarten coordinator. They're talking about sending, extending kindergarten half-day to 12 o'clock.
So at the one meeting that I went to where there were parents involved, the kindergarten teachers talked about the value of adding that additional half-hour to the morning session, and that's where it's at. I mean, we haven't done anything with that.
And they didn't want it extended?
So this one particular family didn't want it? I mean, there might be many families who would applaud the idea.
So there were a couple that talked about it, and one that actually worked about it. It's in the faculty.
I saw that one, yeah.
The, the teachers actually were very excited, because the question that was posed to me was, you know, could we extend it? And I said, well, you know, let's find out why we would do that. And, you know, and they started to give the reasons why. And then just in terms of some of the things that they already thought about, in terms of their schedule for the, for the entire program, they, it already kind of said, you know, this would really work out, that it would almost make it work better for our elementary, our kindergarten kids who are going home at noon time. So I need to look at it, and our board leaders looking at it and talking about it.
So at least you know there is, that's that one side of the argument from some folks?
Right. Oh, definitely, yeah. At that meeting, a couple of parents even said.
So this is another topic of discussion to come later, to be voted on, or?
I, I think that they want to, they're trying to develop, and as part of this, they're going out and looking at other programs. And those visits are happening, I think, between now and sometime in May. And then they were going to come back and sort of develop a program over, you know, document that would describe what the day would look like.
Are they trying to enforce their thoughts that they have already? Or are they looking for?
No, they're trying to collect data about what other programs are, that already have a hybrid day. So they're trying to look at what other schedules look like.
Would they try to put that plan in place for the fall?
I think they, that's what we talked about, because, because one of the schools has a, has, has a schedule that they have for their full-day program that sort of revolves around 12 o'clock as being, and they all kind of start to talk about that and liked it.
Is this an anticipation of maybe keeping a half-day program going forward?
I don't, I don't think that was the genesis of it, no.
So the, the half-day program is dead in the middle of what?
No, I think we're going to talk about it every year.
Right.
It's four years.
Just over four, so after four years, it's dead?
No.
No.
No, okay. Depends on how those votes go.
Right.
All right. Well, you keep throwing out four years, that's, I just.
Well, because that was the proposal that was made.
So that's the minimum.
The kindergarten will stay half-day.
Can we take at least that long to transition, if not longer?
Kindergarten is still optional, right?
It is still optional, yes.
In the long states, not just stores.
Does anybody else have any other issues under correspondence? No? Okay. We'll move along to superintendent's report, Michael.
Yes, and to begin with, we're continuing our conversation about NEAS standards. We have two of our high school teachers. Mike Correa is a social studies teacher, and John Doyle is a science teacher. If you want to come up and sit here, I know we're each taking a different aspect of the standards. And whoever drew the long straw goes first.
Sure. Yeah, John Doyle. I teach anatomy at the high school. Been there for six years now. I drew the short straw of being the person co-chair. There are seven indicators for the curriculum standard that we need to look at for NEAS. I listed them all. There's three on this one, and there's three on the net, or four on the next one. And I do know how familiar or unfamiliar you are with those standards.
Yes.
If you want to, should we go through them?
Yeah.
Okay, so if you could flip back to the first one then for me. The first one is, the curriculum is purposely designed to ensure that all students practice and achieve each of the school's 21st century learning expectations. As you might know, or might not know, from other people who have come, we have new 21st century learning expectations that were developed last year. Our curriculum currently is in a variety of forms. There are written curriculum documents that were done quite a few years ago that have the old 21st century learning expectations in them. There are some that have gotten into Atlas Rubicon, which is an online program that we're currently migrating all of our curriculum to. Many of the courses are not in Atlas Rubicon. We are, we are well behind on Atlas Rubicon. So right now, we're kind of in the middle to that once indicator, you know, do we design our curriculum? Yes, we design our curriculum to ensure that it meets our 21st century learning expectations. Will the committee coming in be able to see this? That's a little bit more difficult. I can assure them, I can show them what I'm doing in my individual classroom, but as far as having a set place where our curriculum is, that they could go in and look and say, oh, look, it's, you know, it's designed, we're not there. Okay? The second one, the curriculum is written in a common format that includes units of study, the school's 21st century expectations, instructional strategies, assessment practices, that include, again, we are in two frames here. We have the old ones that were written, six years, it's before I came, so they're six years old. We redeveloped them a little bit after I came, added a few things to them, but generally, they're, they're older. The Atlas Rubicon, some of the departments are well ahead. Math and English had a very concerted effort to get their information into Atlas Rubicon, so they're far above where everyone else is. But basically, we were given professional development time of one afternoon, so that was two hours to get this in, so it's not.
How long did it take to do?
Oh, hours and hours and hours. It's basically taken what's written in, in, you know, documents and going through it. They've changed, the format's slightly different, so it's readjusting things. So it's going to take hours to get, to get this in. Math, I believe, did a summer workshop. I think they took a week in the summer to work on this over the week, and, and, you know, other departments just don't have that time. So that's where we stand there. The curriculum emphasizes depth of understanding and application of knowledge through inquiry, problem-solving, higher-order thinking, cross-disciplinary learning, authentic learning opportunities both in and out of school, and informed and ethical use of technology. We're doing really well there. Our classes are very strong. We have feedback from students who have gone on to college, who come back, who consistently report that they're well-prepared for school, that their classes were engaging at Nishoba. We have student evidence. We did an Endicott survey at the beginning of the year, so we have student evidence and parent evidence that their children were prepared. Our courses were rigorous. They felt adequate when they went to college. So all of those things. There's a couple areas that are coming along, like cross-disciplinary learning. We didn't really have much there, but next year, there's, I think, like, four or five classes that are being offered that are doing cross-disciplinary, true cross-disciplinary. Now, when I say that, I, I currently cross-discipline with social studies. We did a project where they did the anatomy of the eye, and they also did the psychology of special senses. So we did some projects like that. I do an art project where my kids do the anatomy, and other ones, the art students draw the pictures. But true courses, next year, we will have, I, I think it's four. No, you guys are doing one with English. I'm doing two with English. There's a science and foods, one that's running, or is planned to run. So there's going to be several more that will run. So we're moving along on that one.
The thing is, the part, the students that are coming back, that said that they're well-prepared, they're engaged in everything, is it across the board, like CP through AP kids, or is it generally just the higher-end kids? Is it, is it a mix?
I don't know. I don't know. Usually the ones who come back are going to tell us, it's great, and I'm glad to be back. We don't get a whole lot who are, you know, less successful, you know. If they were struggling in school, they might not come back. We get a large majority. I've never seen a school where so many kids come back. I mean, it is a treat. Every Christmas time, Thanksgiving, and at the end of the year, from the middle of May on, I constantly have a flux. I teach seniors, so they maybe remember me more because I'm at the very end, constantly coming back, visiting the school. It's not unusual to have a pack of, like, four kids coming back and talking to me, and I get, I get emails all the time, you know, so in general, I think guidance gets a lot of notes from students that, you know, they're well-prepared. And colleges, you know, coming back saying that the kids are, are in general prepared.
That's part of our alumni day. We have seniors who come back who've been out, you know, out of Nishoba for maybe one semester, and it's usually during their Christmas break, and it is nice, they do, they show up in flocks and packs at your door, and they just want to tell you how their first semester ran. So it's kind of exciting. And granted, we don't get all the levels of the kids, but I think the ones we do always say, you know, Nishoba was so much harder than what I'm doing now, which I think is a good thing.
Right. Or that their friends were less prepared. So their classes at college are tough, and I've had some kids who have tough, you know, classes, but they say, oh, but I was so much better off than my roommate because they were, you know, really struggling. So that's, that's good news on, on that front. So here's, here's where the clear alignment between the written and the taught curriculum, it's very hard to check that because most of it is outdated. We are really super busy in making our classes the best that they can be. It's just not written down in the Atlas format, and more time really needs to be devoted to being able to do that. But we, again, it was introduced, we were given two hours, and then set free, and then nine other things are dropped on our plate.
Is it Johanna or Johanna?
Johanna. My father is a John, so I'm a John now.
So what's the, so is, is that critical, to get that into this tool?
Yes. Well, we're probably, when NEAS comes in, we're probably going to be deficient on this.
But, but when is NEAS coming in?
Next year.
So I don't want to sound like I, either I'm being a wise guy, or I don't know anything. Oh, no, I'm pretty much out there. What, what do we need to do in order to get that done? Except, I mean, and I don't know what the, what the steps are to take to do it, but it sounds like we could, we could get it done. What, what needs to happen?
Well, I mean, a lot of time needs to be invested, and the time needs to be set aside, professional development time needs to be set aside. That being said, I don't know, DDMs, baseline, all of these other things, our retail are being thrown at us at the same time. So right now, our professional development's being split between getting this evidence for NEAS, doing our DDMs, which are district-determined measures, which we all have to have those.
What do those do?
And then baseline edge, which is our evaluations.
What's a DDM for?
Am I okay?
Yeah.
Keep going. District-determined measures. So each person has to have two district-determined measures that we are going to test all of our students on at the beginning and at the end of the year to prove that they are making progress in a district-determined measure. So I can tell you, like, for science, one thing that we chose, we chose one that all of us will do together, and we chose one that each teacher can do individually. We chose the metric system for our district-determined measure because, exactly, that's what we get with all the kids, the same exact face. But we want to show that by the time our kids, at least the way science is taking this, we want to show that by the time our kids graduate from Nishoba and move on to a program at a four-year, very competitive college, that their metric sense is where it needs to be. And so we start, and we are spiraling it up, so that every year, we will be able to show that the kids are getting, getting tested and shown that they can succeed on the metric system. So that's one that we're all doing, so to speak.
So that helps me, the three things you just talked about that have to be done, helps me understand why there's so much angst over the volume.
Yes.
Of additional consideration.
There's a huge amount this year. I, I had to go through the retail course. I can tell you, I would rather have my eyes plucked out of my head. It's long, it's very, very difficult, and it's very time-consuming. It was a lot of work, and that was about 10 weeks, 10, 11 weeks, that I had to do that. On top of now the DDMs, on top of chairing the NEAS committee, and on top of the new evaluations, which are out there, which I have to upload evidence for all of these standards from my class to do. And the amount of time that we really have for professional developments, you know, like, we have a day and two half-days coming up, but they're all devoted to NEAS right now, except for one half is just going to be devoted to DDMs.
But is that a function, again, and then I'll stop asking questions. But is that a function of this NEAS, I mean, NEAS preparing for it, that it's just like, if, if that wasn't in the mix, would it still be as extraordinary of additional work as it is?
What I can tell you in terms of for curriculum for Atlas, the professional development that we get is often designed by someone else. So we don't have a lot of time where we're allowed to do, like, like, we were allowed two hours devoted to Atlas in the last two years.
Is that two hours on the clock, or two hours within the tool?
Two hours on the clock. Everyone has access to the tool. So two hours on the clock, professional development. And I can tell you, I spent my two hours, you know, starting to work on that, and then I stop, and then you have to kind of relearn the pro, I mean, you have to kind of start, it's not one of those things, you know, like.
It's a workshop kind of thing. You need to sit down.
You need to sit down and be focused for.
Why it's time.
Which is why the math department put in for the summer program, and they took a whole week because they had to have theirs in, and the English too, so.
And we think it's important, we need to fund it.
Exactly. We did. It wasn't the budget, but we summed it up.
So teachers, any teachers K through 12 will have, as we have every year, professional development, summer academy, and they put in for curriculum time that they need in the principal groups. So there'll be, and there's more this year, specifically for the curriculum and the work that we're trying to do with Atlas.
The next one, effective curricular coordination. Vertical articulation exists between and among academic areas, as well as with ascending schools. The high school, we have a very good eighth-grade transition, and they're still always constantly looking at that and seeing how we can make that effective. Staffing levels, instructional materials, technology, equipment, supplies, et cetera, et cetera. To do what we do is always a struggle. You know, it's, it's always a struggle. To do what we do is, is always a struggle. You know, it's, it's always a struggle. We don't have the number of teachers. In order for me to run the new class that I'm gonna run, that means some kids aren't gonna get anatomy. So I run five classes of anatomy to do this. I have to drop to four classes. My classes are all overloaded, you know, as, uh, uh, top-loaded, you know, they're, they're right up to the maximum as it is. So we don't have the staffing, we don't have the materials, you know, to, to keep offering these kinds of 21st century curriculum that we would like to offer. So, and then district provides the school's professional staff with sufficient personnel time and, and financial resources. Again, it's not enough. That is, that is going to be one indicator where, well, we have a great curriculum. We have a great curriculum because a lot of teachers put a lot of their own time and their, you know, their own work into developing this curriculum, and then everything else that gets thrown in on top of it, we don't have it in the Atlas.
Did you used to have more personal development time, like the, the professional development time? Was there used to, I remember more half-days before, was that more, or did you say no?
Yeah, they do. And again, it's not so much the amount of, of time, it's all of the things that are demanded upon us for that time. And whenever we have a day, we have, you know, different types of meetings or different things that we have to go to, when really what we need to do is to say, there's more time for the high school sites. It may make more sense for the elementary schools and the middle schools to do more, you know, kind of group things and more planned activities, but we, what we really need is time to work on the things that, that matter to the high school, which at this point are the NEASK, the getting the curriculum in, the instruction assessment is, is, you know, gonna need some work on that too. We don't have the time. We, at the high school, it's, it's difficult because I can literally go weeks and never see my, I can go weeks and never see some other, you know, people. It's the time, the way it's set up, we don't have common planning time, we don't have core time. And while we're trying to work on some of that, it's a very difficult thing to do. So, so these professional development days are the times when we really need to be meeting with our groups and within our school and doing what needs to be done for the high school, not so much maybe what some of the other professional development days are targeted for.
So you never have a professional development day that isn't sort of earmarked for something?
No, I won't say that. We do have some, but we need more. We need more, yeah. Yeah. So there are district-based days and there's school-based days, but there, it's just not, yeah.
Have you got relief of some of your duties, like lunch duty, if we had other stuff or something to do that? Would that give you more time to meet with?
We have what we call PLTs, right, that, that the principal, Dr. Graham, has started setting up, and it was relieving some of your duties to have a common planning time with your group to do it. And so many teachers, you know, took advantage of that, but again, we all can't do that because someone still needs to mind the children in the cafeteria.
But people believe that was their job.
Yeah, that would be fantastic. That would be fantastic.
That didn't maybe have three degrees, like, you know what I mean?
Anything else, Tom Parkin?
Okay. I'm the, I'm the co-chair of the instruction committee, so I didn't bring a slide, but I'm gonna go over the five main points of it. Basically, one of our first main points is that the teachers at the Shoba Regional High School continuously exam our instructional practices to ensure they match up with the school's core values of integrity, communication, achievement, relating, and engagement. One of the examples are, you know, with integrity is to make sure our students know what plagiarism is. Already this year, I've had two students who have been caught, if you wanna use that term. So the idea is to ensure that they realize and recognize that integrity above all, I mean, I came from an Air Force background where the first core value was integrity first. So we try to use that initially, that base of integrity to ensure that they know what's going on. Talk about communication, to ensure that students are aware of assignments, assessments, deadlines. One of the things I do, this for the last three or four years, is I get all the emails of all the students. I get, and I get all the emails of all the parents, and every week, I send out an email that basically says, "Here's what's going on this week," and it's whether it be assessments, whether it be quizzes, whether it be assignments. I also have a school notes page that I update every weekend that basically breaks down what we're doing each week. That's just something I like to do. I think it's more for me sometimes, keep me on track, but hopefully helps the students and the parents as well. You know, certainly with achievement, we wanna make sure that, you know, they're getting something out of the instruction that we're providing. Whether it's, you know, passing a class, whether it's a difficult class, like an AP class, whether it's an achievement of getting that diploma at the end of their four years at the high school, we wanna ensure that they're getting something out of their time with us. As far as relating, you know, I look at it as a student who comes in and asks me, "I don't know how to do this. Can you assist me with something?" And I can try to step back and think to myself, "What was it like thirty years ago?" Oh, I'm getting old. "What was it like thirty years ago when I was in high school? And how can I relate to that individual now at fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, looking for the future and how they can help themselves?" And certainly engagement. One of the things we do, whether it's Q and A, whether it's a guided discussion, whether, in some cases, we have these clickers where they can actually like, you know, click something. It's like a poll that they do. We do let them use their cell phone sometimes for academic reasons, and so sometimes that comes in handy. So we try to utilize those core values as far as, you know, what we use. The other, another main point is teachers' instructional practices support those core values by learning, and learning expectations by personalizing instruction, by using multiple forms of media. One of the things I like to do sometimes is, if I'm talking to a class, if I can find a better way, 'cause I get tongue-tied, as you can probably tell, I might be able to show them a quick three-minute video. I might be able to show them something that will reinforce the material that they're learning within that class. And in some cases, that can be the difference between getting it right or getting it wrong on an assessment. Possibly gathering feedback on student understanding. One of the things I really like to do at the end of a semester or the end of the year are surveys. You know, something along the lines of, "Give me five things you liked about that class or about this class. Give me five things you would change." Five things, and I tell them, "Be blunt. Be honest. I really need you to, don't, don't tell me what I wanna hear. Don't try to stroke my ego. Don't make me, you know, if you don't like something, you gotta tell me." Because while you might be leaving this class, the group that comes in after you, I might be able to adapt and adjust to that new group of students coming in. Providing options on assessments. One of the things I really like to do, we usually do this in the last couple of quarters of a school year, is I'm gonna give you five different assignments. Pick the one that works for you. Pick the one that, I hear the art issue with the art thing. If there's something where you can be creative, if there's something where you can put together a video of your own, if there's something where you can take something you're really good out of strength and utilize it and create a really good project, that looks good for you, and obviously it looks good for us. We want them to ask questions, and one of the things I always do is, like the former already started, questions, comments, concerns, anything that you have, and some kids ask questions, it would be on an assignment, a deadline, those type of things. And again, in some cases, and I've done this before, is having students quote-unquote "drive." I've done this with freshmen. I've tried it with juniors. They teach a lesson. They put together a lesson plan. They put together an assessment for their classmates. I just sit back as a student, usually I'm on my cellphone. The idea is to get, allow them the opportunity to take what they've learned and apply it to the classroom, and maybe teach, you know, some of the kids what they've learned. And I think sometimes it's great because they get to get up there, they get to show off sometimes. And again, it's an option for an assignment. Let's see what else. We want students to become, again, self-directed learners. Again, to ask questions, integrate their own technology, whether it be a video, whether it be, one of the things I know some teachers do, some have Twitter accounts where they can update their Twitter account. Suddenly, you'll go up to all their followers. I don't have a Twitter account, so I know how it works. But the idea is all their followers, their students, will see what's due next week or what's due tomorrow. I'm the advisor for the amnesty club at the high school, so we have like a Facebook page. It's not my personal page, but it's like a, you know, group page where if we have a meeting coming up or a conference or a telethon or something along those lines, they can get that information as well. And how do we apply what they've learned? Through carefully crafted assessments, whether it's a test or a quiz, a project, something they can hopefully understand, hopefully something they can use, and hopefully something that'll give them to that achievement stage down the road. The third one is adjustment of practices to meet students' needs. How do we do this? Formative assessments. One of the things I wrote is, crawl before you walk, walk before you run. These are things that don't count. These formative assessments are designed to determine how much do you already know. Because let's say, for example, I'm teaching a class on the Cuban Missile Crisis or John F. Kennedy. I may give you a quick ten-question assessment just to gauge your knowledge, and all of you may know all of this stuff already. You may have the ability to quote back to me items, fragments, everything else, and I go, "Wow, maybe I don't need to spend as much time on it because obviously my core audience already knows what's going on." Differentiation. No matter the level of student, no matter the grade of the student, the idea is to get to differentiate, to ensure achievement for everybody within that group. To organize activities, you know, whether it's something you do in your classroom, whether it's something you do offline, provide support both within and outside the classroom. I actually like it when I get emails from students over the weekend. It sounds weird to say that, but it tells me that they're interested in what's going on, they have specific questions that I can, hopefully, hopefully I can answer. And the idea is, again, I would rather have a student ask me a question and get an answer from me than not ask the question and possibly do it wrong or incorrect or incomplete. And I always tell the students, I'm sometimes up till 11:30. I can't sleep sometimes. Plus Jimmy Fallon's now on 11:30, so I gotta watch that. So if you email me, chances are, you may get an email back to me at 11:35 in the evening, but I will, I will respond to your emails. Although there are other days when I go to bed at 9:30 because I'm just exhausted from watching Jimmy Fallon at 11:30. Now, how is this done? One of the things, I know every single teacher at the high school, and certainly teachers in the district, we have a Google site. Used to have SharePoint, now we have a Google site. I like to use PowerPoints. I came from a military background, so death by PowerPoint, but I try to make it more interesting than that. And every single PowerPoint is posted. Every single notes posted. Everything I hand out, posted. That way, if I get a student who walks in, "Mr. Pori, do you have another copy of that review sheet?" Now, if I have an extra copy available, absolutely, here you go. Take care. And if I don't, my response is, "Check my Google site." And every time, you can actually have a, I believe, students can do this on their own Google accounts where, when I update something, they get a ping. They can actually find out, oh, so he posted something. Boom, I can go find out what he posted. In some cases, I'm not doing this. My wife teaches at another high school. She actually has her own YouTube account. I don't know if any of the teachers at any of the schools, she actually has her own English YouTube account. I don't know if I could do that. But again, if teachers wanna try that, I think it's something that's great because she just gives information to all of her students and they can access it 24/7. And that, it's pretty cool. All right, next one. Individually and collaboratively improve instructional practices. As Johnna mentioned that earlier, we have PLTs, professional learning groups where basically, like, I may collaborate with you. We may, again, talk about a test we gave. We may talk about how we can adapt it, adjust it. We take data. You know, how did your kids, we may teach the same exact class. How did your kids do on that test? You got a seventy-five, I got an eighty-three. Where's the disconnect? Is it the students? Is it the test? Is it me? Am I being too easy? Are you being too hard? These are discussions we have constantly. This is the first year I got to teach AP US History, and I'm teaching it with Michelle Follen, and this is her first time. And we have, thank God, we have Tim Castor, who's been teaching it for over a decade. So we're bouncing back and forth between, are we doing it right? Are there things that we can do better? So collaboration really is the key. And again, we use it from the formative assessments, from the summative assessments, those are the ones that count. We determine high-miss areas. How come number twenty-seven, fifty-three out of fifty-six kids got it wrong? Was it the question? Was it hard to understand? So how can we make it better? How can we make it easier, maybe? Examine student work, again, through surveys. Parents get surveyed all the time. One of the things I like to do at the end of the year, end of the classes, "Dear Mr. and Mrs. So-and-so, what'd you think of the class based on what you heard from your son, your daughter, whatever? I'm curious to know." Some parents who say to me, "Much too hard, Mr. Pori," or "Just right, Mr. Pori," or "Way too easy, Mr. Pori." I guess it just depends on the class and the parent. And again, we use current research. The idea is to go online, find out what other people are doing. When I found out I was teaching AP US, and prior to that I taught AP Gov, I tried to find other teacher sites. What do they have available? What can I borrow or benchmark from them and possibly utilize in my classroom? I found great stuff, you know, stuff that I could use. I even emailed some of them and asked, "How do you do this? What do you do for this lesson? What do you do for this unit?" And I think that's fantastic. The last one is reflection and maintaining expertise in content area and content-specific instructional practices. One of the things I've done, I know some of my colleagues have done over the last few years, is I've got two AP Academies. The one in Vermont and St. Johnsbury, the food is incredible. I'm just gonna say that upfront. The lessons are great, but the food is unbelievable. It was just fantastic. I also went to one in Pittsburgh State for the AP US History course, and what it's designed to do in that one week is literally just dump a whole bunch of material on you and hopefully help you better understand what the course is all about. How to plan, how to practice. I mean, I had one, my students asked me a couple of weeks ago, "With all the snow days we've had, are they gonna move the test?" No, they're not gonna move the test. It's gonna be on May fourteenth. We could have ten snow days and it wouldn't make a difference. It's on May fourteenth. We have to be done with our next chapter by next Thursday. And then that's it. They go to vacation. They come back. We start reviewing, take the test two weeks later. So it's helped me by going to those workshops, by going to conferences, by visiting other schools, by emailing colleagues, people who've taught this before, is it helps me maintain my expertise in that content area.
So you have to prove all this.
You surely do.
So you're not the only teacher who has to prove all this. How are you do that at the school level?
The school level?
School-wide level.
What do you mean?
So we have evidence boxes that people can drop in. So how I can, I can go in and drop evidence from my class into Mike's evidence box, so for instruction.
Virtual evidence.
Yeah, virtually. But they're also, NEASK is gonna go and visit many of the teachers. They're going to shadow the students, so they'll be sitting in on lots of classes, so they will have visual proof firsthand for themselves of some of the evidence that he's talking about, what he does in his class. And Mike's a fantastic teacher and been there a while and stuff, and, you know, is it the same for all classes? You know, maybe not, but we can, we can show what we have, you know, the evidence that we have.
And that also shows differentiation because, you know, they might see one class do something, another class do something entirely different. And obviously, the classes are all different as well. I mean, you know, I, you know, I don't know if I could do the same thing Johnna does in her class that someone else could do in another class, but that's a great, that's a great part of it, is they're gonna see when they shadow a student or when they sit in on a classroom or a number of different classrooms, they're gonna see different styles. And I think that's really, I think it's, because you're gonna see it in college. You know, you're gonna see different styles in college as well.
So you feel like we're doing good on most of the standards you talked about? It seemed like you had a lot of evidence.
One of the things that's really great with instruction is that I think because of the fact that we can, we can show it. It's tangible. It's in your hands. I can give you a test.
Right.
You know, I can give you a quiz. I can give you a project. I can give you, you know, I can dump in that box. You can probably fill that box up between all the teachers we have. So I like to think this, this indicator, I think we're, we're in decent shape. We can be better.
Right.
I think the thing we have to make sure of is that when they walk in the door, they're gonna say, "Show me the money." And we have to make sure that we can say, "Boom, here it is."
The language written around some of these in order to get, like, acceptable or excelled or deficient are, are words like "all" and for every student and "all the time." So those are the words that, you know, become a little bit more, exactly. Gets a little bit more difficult to show "all" or "every time," you know what I mean? So it's, it's a huge amount of work. You know, you talk about professional development. This has all been devoted, you know, so I, I wanna give Mike stuff, but I need people to give me stuff, and then the assessment group wants stuff for their group, and then the core value wants me to show how I'm doing core values. So I am going, you know, so there's just not enough time in any day to do the amount of stuff that we're trying to do for this NEASK. And then, of course, you throw in DDMs, you throw in baseline edge, and retail on top of all that. Yeah, oh, it's those kids.
It really is a crazy storm though.
You know, I think the, the teachers are so dedicated at the high school that, you know, people are really working hard to, you know, I don't think the classes are going to suffer for this. The teachers might be a little more stressed. You might see more gray hair going around. But the classes are in good shape.
I think we're gonna NEASK party at Mike's.
Oh, yeah, trust me.
At your house.
I think it's, I mean, I spent twenty years in the Air Force. I mean, I went through many inspections. To me, this is like another inspection. It really is. It's just another way. People come in, they wanna see your stuff. They wanna make sure that you're good to go, and you make sure that you're prepared. And that's really the key, I think, for anything. So I, I have to, by this time next year, you're gonna see a lot of the high school teachers just doing a big, oh, thank God. And then, of course, you gotta prep for the ten years later when they come back and do it again, so. Any questions, comments, concerns, or issues? Say it again.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just wanna thank you guys, 'cause I know all the time you dedicate to it, and it just speaks to your dedication to our kids and to the schools, and it's really huge and greatly appreciated. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
So just continuing on, let me talk about school choice. We held our lottery last week on Friday. In grade nine, we had eleven seats available. Seven were taken before the lottery even started because of sibling preferences, and so four seats were filled to the lottery. There were thirty applicants altogether in, in, for the ninth, ninth grade. Twenty-three entered the lottery, nineteen remain on the list, and we'll go through. If the eleven don't respond in a timely manner, that they're gonna take those seats. So some disappointed folks who attended the lottery, it's always unfortunate, but the system worked well. Grade ten?
Go ahead and ask me the question, but I don't want to interrupt you. On the, the school choice spots, so you say there's eleven, there were eleven available seats. So what happens if in the next couple of months, some of our current school choice students who are ours decide that they're not gonna go to the high school, for example? They're gonna go somewhere else. Is that, then, would there be twelve seats?
So if, between now and September one, anybody who is currently a school choice student in grade nine, going into grade nine, don't choose to attend, we'll continue to go down through that list.
Okay.
And we'll place those individuals.
So that's, that's the way that the list could?
That's the way the list could expire.
Move along.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
And legally, we can't give preferences to people who are up here.
Right. Difficult. In grade ten, we had four, uh, four open seats and we had four applicants, so there was no need for a lottery there. Grade eleven and grade twelve, we had no open seats. So we have a total of a hundred and twenty-five in each grade, and we monitor it carefully because it's, it's important to our district, and so we'll keep track of it as people come and go over the summer.
So people will be notified based on the number that they are on the list?
Correct. They already have, and we notify everybody.
No, but I mean, if, if somebody decides they're not great, there's-
Yes, they'll be contacted individually.
Okay.
Yeah.
And there isn't some sort of deadline by which people need to say they're coming or they're not coming?
Yes, there is, actually.
There is?
By the eighteenth.
Of May?
Of, of April.
Oh, oh, wow.
Yeah. Because this is, people are waiting on other kinds of choices, and if they'd rather choose us first, I mean, obviously, they need to know as quickly as possible. So we give them a deadline. If they don't respond, then we pick them up the list.
What, is that true for our current students?
No, they're already in.
No, but I mean, if they're deciding not, they're not gonna go to high school yet, they're, it's current meeting-
Oh, no, that, that, this is only for the lottery folks. So if, if our current kids who are in school choice, it's open-ended.
So they could decide in August that they're not gonna come back? So, so there's no telling when somebody might come off that waitlist. It could be August.
Right.
Okay.
We've had that happen.
I just wanna, I've had those questions asked, that's why I'm asking them out loud.
It says that thirty applicants in total, twenty-three get to the lottery and nineteen remain on the list. Does that improve the seven, the taken-by-seven choice? They weren't to the lottery, right? They weren't through the lottery, right? They were just, those were?
No, that's why they were 23, because there were 30 minus the seven, and that's how you get to 23. So just going on, we've recently been notified we were awarded a $5,000 grant for, to coincide with our early childhood grant, with our Coordinated Family Community Engagement. And it's focused on STEM, which is very exciting. So our community partnership coordinator, early childhood coordinator, is going to work with our STEM coordinator in delivering science and technology lessons to three- and four-year-olds. This is very much a community-based grant, and so they're gonna be going into the existing preschools in the area, within our catchment area, and delivering those lessons. Just a reminder for our parents, we do have early release next week, as our teachers noted here. It's a little different this year because of Niask. So next week, Wednesday and Thursday are early release days for everybody, pre-K through 12. And then Friday is an all-day professional development day for our teachers. And so I know that that's a challenging schedule for our parents, but I wanna make sure they have advanced notice for our 9th through 12 folks as well, because that's, that's different this year.
The high school has early release too?
Yes.
'Cause right now, you reminded us next week, there are two early release days, on Wednesday and Thursday. Oh, for parent teacher conference.
Right, for K through A.
That's what I read at home too.
Right. So the high school will be working?
No, I read it differently. I thought that K to eight only have the app there.
Right. So the high school will be working on Niask those two days and a portion of Friday. And so they need, need the time, so we've made an effort to figure out the time. Yes, more than two hours. We are, last week, I think I told you about our CPR review, which is a coordinated program review. A component of program review that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education does as well is Title I, which we have two Title I schools in the district. And so I'll be visiting tomorrow with representative of the department, and we'll be meeting. Her focus is actually how it is that we went from Level III schools, or then AYP schools, to become Level I schools. So she's very interested in the strategies that the schools employ. So she'll meet with me and the teachers to learn those strategies. We've, we've been having some ongoing conversations about our emergency procedures specific to our lockdown. We have been getting caught up to date with the federal guidelines from the Federal Department of Education around lockdown. And they do include some recommendations and requirements for addressing other than simply lockdown and set in place. So we're looking at one of the programs that many of you may have read about or heard about. It's called ALIS. It's called Alert Lockdown Inform Counter and Evacuate. And there are components of it that I think would complement what we currently do and help us maybe examine our, our practices a little differently. So we are looking into having some further training. We did a webinar with our chiefs of police. And we'll be looking into the possibility of creating a training opportunity for police representatives and school representatives and fire representatives, so that we can look at the training and then see how it should inform our evacuation procedures. We met in Tri-Town last week, I think it was the shortest meeting of the year. I vote, by the way, for quarterly meetings in the future, which is one of the things that we talked about, is moving instead of monthly meetings. The discussion, the agenda item, the only agenda item, was to talk about a proposal that we've made informally and talked more about it more formally at this meeting. And that is for the district to take over management of the fields at the school sites. And so for, be for Lancaster, both in Stowe. And so our next step is to look at a budget within our existing budget. This won't be something that will be an additional expense. We'll have to expend differently, but not an additional expense out of our FY15 budget. And Bill's working on that now, so we'll take a look at what that looks like.
The fields are in pretty bad shape. I'm surprised if you can just come, I mean, they're not a little bad.
Right.
They're bad.
Dangerous bad.
So, so we wanna get working on that and, and see what we can do to make sure. Obviously, if there is a capital request or requirement to get them really above, we want, we're gonna work with them for about a year or two before we make that decision, I suppose. And then, if we can't do it, then we'll do a capital request. Stowe did that, what, two years ago, we had to redo the Hail Field, the town had to, so.
So if there ever is an expense like that, then that's going back to the town?
That'll go back to the state. That's correct. Great. I mean, essentially, we did, we did partial mowing, and we monitored the fertilization anyway, although I think in Lancaster, we didn't do that as much. And so we're just gonna formalize it and do the same across all, in the entire district. We have the equipment already. It'll be man-hours mostly, but already, you know, computed as part of our budget. And then, lastly, two things, our budget flyer is going out. It should, we, I think, just sent it off to the printers. So it should arrive in homes in the district over the April break. And so I hope people find that informative in preparation for town meeting. And lastly, something we're looking at internally, we've, we have Power School, and Power School has, is our student information service. And they have begun this partnership project with a lot of different vendors to sort of have added modules to their software to make it more user-friendly. One of the ones that we are interested in is looking at an online registration process, so that parents wouldn't get all that paperwork at the beginning of the year, and they don't have to do one entry, and it would populate for all of their kids, all of the demographic information. So we're looking at that as a possibility to get it up and running for the fall, if we can manage that, so.
If it takes Visa, that'd be great.
What's that?
Somebody in the, the payment center doesn't take Visa, it only needs MasterCard, Discover. My debit card's Visa, so.
Right.
Yeah.
That's our bank issue.
It's a bank issue.
You mean how you pay?
What?
This is?
I can get a debit card with MasterCard, I call them that.
This does have, this would work under a different bank, it can take fees.
Yeah.
So we could look at switching some of that around. I rely on George and our treasurer to look into that more in depth. But they, they do have a system by where they would take fees for us, at a fee. So. So that's the superintendent's report.
Great, thank you. The one thing that we didn't talk about was the calendar with us, because it's later on the agenda, right?
Correct.
Great, moving on to subcommittee reports. First up is Nashida with our student report from the high school.
Starting off, the last regular meeting for the Central Mass Regional Student Advisory Council was last Wednesday at Hudson High. We just kind of wrapped up talking about all of our projects in the three, like, kind of subcommittees, which were digital learning, college and career readiness, and educator evaluation. So we had a productive year, and it was really helpful, like, bringing information into Nishoba about different types of resources teachers use to, in their classroom, kind of, in regards to technology, and kind of taking whatever we do at Nishoba and like bringing that information to other high schools. So it was good, it was a good experience. I was happy, it was a, I'm glad to be able to represent Nishoba.
How do we compare other schools?
We're really well off. A lot of other schools, like, the BYOD thing was like, it was in a few other schools, but people thought that was really interesting, and we have like a good system going, which is good. We're electing next year's representatives tomorrow.
How many are there?
There's two.
Two.
The other one is Talia Kirshbaum, she's a junior, so she'll be continuing, continuing next year, but there's one more replacing me. Yep, and Nishoba EMS's CPR marathon was held two weekends ago, and it was an overall success. We reached our fundraising goal, and it was a lot of fun. We did the 24 hours continuous CPR, and it was an overall success. The spring concert was held on last Tuesday, and the band and chorus also participated in the MICA competition, and chorus placed in third place, winning the bronze medal. And spring sports were off to a slow start due to weather and field conditions, but now all of the teams have begun their game schedule this week, and we're looking forward to some more weather and a good spring.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you.
My end subcommittee, Maureen. We approved the warrants, and had a little discussion on, you know, some little side details of, some, some of the students that come into the district through other means and how that, their topic work, just sort of general information, so that we can understand items that come up on warrants and stuff. Other than that, that was about it.
Okay, great. Personnel subcommittee, we have finished negotiations with the teacher junior.
Congrats.
Yeah, I don't know if we're allowed to say anything more than that yet.
Probably not.
Okay, take it back.
So a little bit smaller than that.
The things are moving along.
It's great news, yeah.
Yeah.
And for our policy subcommittee, there's no report. We haven't met since our last, the last time we've all met. ESBC, there's no report. Space Study Task Force, Maureen, do you have something to update us with?
Actually, you know, the first few meetings, it's like, huh, what are we doing, what are we doing? Now we're really starting to move into understanding what the constraints are at the high school. And Bill Cleary was amazing presentation. He came in with a lot of data that was condensed and presented it really well, and shared with us a thorough overview of the systems that are in the building and what their longevity is, and when he predicts that we're gonna need to make some changes and on which systems. He shared a five-year plan, for those of you who are interested. He did share a five-year plan on his maintenance schedule. And then, one of the things that I think was really telling and interesting, he shared a thermal scan of the roof and the issues that we have right now at the high school. And for anyone that has any concern that there isn't an issue with our roof, they need to take a look at that plan, because it's, it's pretty telling. Because of that meeting, I thought this is probably a good time, and asked Kathy, if she went to come with me, just to see what does the high school look like and feel like when school's in session? And that was really eye-opening. So that will help inform some of the meetings that we have going forward, right? As far as?
I liked a lot, I really enjoyed it. I learned so much, so many different things I didn't think I was gonna think, I thought, which, you know. Well, it's true, you don't know when you don't know, so you have assumptions and you live in your environment.
I know I'm known, I suppose, didn't know that.
That's good, that's great that you did.
And even changed my opinions on some things, which I thought were unchangeable. And they did, just a day in the life of.
Can you guys just remind us how many people are on this task force and how often do you meet?
Well, Kathy's not on it, but I just dragged her.
She invited everyone, I just raised my hand.
Yes. She came. Um, I don't know, Michael, what, 20 maybe?
Yeah, all together on, on paper.
Right.
We've been having about, like, 15?
If that, yeah.
About 15, regular times.
But really well, really well represented from the schools?
Each town, yeah.
And the community, and it's really, it's a decent group of people who are interested, involved, and not just wondering.
The high school shows a lot better during the day, 'cause I did the parent tour at night.
Yeah.
With the sunlight, it really, I'm telling you, it's really shows differently.
Yes, I agree. There's something about the last night. Evening light is a little more.
It's not as complimentary.
Yeah, yes.
But that was good, so for anyone who hasn't taken a tour when school's in session, you gotta do it. You gotta do it.
Great, okay.
Yes, it's not, it's not called CPAC, they've renamed it, so it's the Special Education Parents Advisory. No, no. So they met also last Wednesday, the 25th, and they had their IEP review process, parent rights process, that an outside provider came in and went over that, so. And then, next meeting is, I believe, I'll get to the date, I believe, I wanna say it's next Wednesday.
Is there a different person leading the charge yet, or?
No, but, no, no. Just, she was out of commission for a bit.
Okay. Great, thank you. New business? For the next agenda, does anybody have any?
I said one, it doesn't matter when you put it on.
Okay.
Remember I sent it? Oh, what was it? Oh, homework. What was, what's the district homework policy? What, what are our expectations for a healthy homework load versus unhealthy? What happens if we, you know, have some unhealthy homework levels?
Okay.
What's the expectation? And do we even have a policy? Which I guess we have no policy.
We don't have an official one, right?
Oh, we don't have a new show?
We don't have any policy, which is fine, I'm not saying we need a policy, I just wanted to know.
So you'd like to see this as an agenda item in a future meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that your French, George?
No, I think there's, I tell the rest of the students.
We paid to get them exterminated.
It's just the wind.
Sounds like somebody's roller skating on the roof.
No, it's the wind, the wind's getting trapped in between the inner and the outer.
I get used to that, so.
Right, right. It's mesmerizing.
Any other agenda items?
I kinda forgot, and I just was reminded of a correspondence, that people have concerns of, and I don't know how true this is, of, seems like a greater influx of kids from RFK. I did tell them that we're mandated to educate them in our schools, but I guess they feel like there's been a lot more behavior issues that have been impacting since like there's a lot more kids now, and how do we know if these kids are appropriate to be in a school setting? And, you know, they, I mean, they were very sensitive to, you know, the kids probably don't have a great history, and sympathize to that, but at what point do we not let it affect our typical learners?
I had a similar, a couple of weeks back, similar correspondence. If there's any response to this.
Well, I think, well, first of all, we have, we have a number of group homes in, in one of our communities, and so we are obligated under the law to educate students who live at group homes. And they are like any other student who comes, they arrive and you're supposed to educate them. And the state is very clear about that. So the screening process that we would use is like we would for any intake. And, you know, if there are circumstances that we learn about, and sometimes we don't always learn about them immediately, we do address that, and we certainly take, you know, follow our own policies for our own students in terms of what we can do in managing their behaviors, or managing their attendance, or managing whether or not they, you know, come to school, they're in high school, or are middle schools for that. So there, the one particular group home has entered into contracts with the state to have an increased number of students, clients living there. And so our, our population will rise. And, you know, in the prior, previous years, we've had about six, give or take, at any given time, and not always the same six. And now we have about 12 on any given day, so, but we have, may have as many as 35 with the new contracts that they have.
Do we feel like we have the resources to handle?
I think we have, no, no, we don't.
Right, and I think that's probably the main concern. I mean, even six to 12, that's doubling what we're used to, and.
Is there any reimbursement?
None, none other than the usual Chapter 70, they count as a student.
So they wouldn't be like titled? So they wouldn't be entitled to it, would they?
Uh, they may be, uh, they may be.
What was your question?
Depending on how they get placed there.
Is there some place where we get reimbursement for them? Because it is, I mean, as the numbers get higher, it is a post-reign because we're, we are discussing whether we're gonna keep, uh, bringing in school choice kids because the numbers are increasing.
These are not school choices.
In a way, well, they're not school choices, but they're.
They're adding to the population.
Right.
It's a big increase to the population, it's not small, that's a big increase.
If they all come.
Yeah, so at that point, the only way that we can keep our population down is to reduce school choice. That's our, that's our only recourse if the state's making a stake in these kids. So my question was, do we get reimbursed? Because they're from troubled homes or whatever.
No, there's, there's no addition.
Their residence is.
So my, my big concern too is that the folks who are responsible right now, a lot of the students or some of the students have greater need than we can assist them with. And you've acknowledged that. And you've acknowledged the program that you're looking at building, putting in place. But I, you know, I'm glad you brought it up because I didn't bring it up. But the parents that I've talked to and some of the folks from the school, um, are worried that because the, because the resources that, that are being used are being taken from other areas, they're kinda over, they're overwhelmed and they can't handle any more than they already have. But my response to them, and I hope this was appropriate, was that there is something in the budget to put, and to put at least one person in who would, can you talk to that a little bit?
Sure, so we, prior to our budget, we talked about response to intervention. This is a big piece of that, so we, we are already actually advancing that now. We're interviewing, uh, as we speak.
And who, what are the credentials of that person?
That, that person is gonna be a social worker slash adjustment counselor, um, so that they can work for the, you know, to intake and then be a resource when the students are there and, and help them adjust to the school environment. In many, in many cases, uh, these young people have not been in a traditional high school for a number of months, if not years. Uh, and so, you know, we're trying to reintroduce them into a complex that they're, that's foreign to them.
Right.
And even in a sense, I mean, someone made this comparison to me. A lot of them don't come from a typical school, like a school like Bolton, a Bolton High School. They're coming from, it's like putting out, send our kids into an inner-city school. I mean, how would they do?
Exactly.
You know, so.
But even our own, our, our resident students, our lifelong resident students acknowledged that and said, I can't even admit.
Well, they admit that, yeah, they couldn't.
They get it, but they're still.
Different environment.
Yeah, and you know, I'm wondering too, if there's a way to just, I don't even know how this would work, but there's gotta be a way to kind of bridge some gaps with the student body as well.
There are, I think there's some things that we can do, but again, you need, you need people who think that way.
And know what they're doing.
And know what they're doing to help those relationships start to build.
And so is one person gonna be enough?
Uh, no, um, and so we're looking at other ways to augment that.
And can, I don't even know if you can do this, can you identify them to our student resource officer? Or you can't do that? Just, I mean, I'm thinking that someone who may.
Um, yes, I mean, they are definitely part of the conversation about how to help transition them in. Absolutely.
So one resource seems like an appropriate amount for maybe twelve. But if it is going to be thirty-five and, do we know it's gonna be thirty-five? Or do we, is it speculating that it's thirty-five? Because thirty-five is a huge number to me. That's more than a class.
I mean, it's huge.
That's huge.
Yeah, so that's the number of beds they have available.
And, and are they doing something at Luther Burbank as well? Because this will impact Luther Burbank as well, too.
Right, so we have not seen the numbers this year, but we will, we will be doing something for next year.
Will there be a, but, but that's just a huge number. Like if we had this number, we would be hiring more than one teacher. And now we're just saying, and this isn't even a teacher, this is just one additional staff. Like, don't we need more than one? In my opinion, we need two at least.
But you did, when did you know that we were, that, and to be fair, it's not just that population. There's also, there's also students across our district who have lifelong residents that could use additional support too. So that thirty, forty kids could end up being a hundred kids, who knows how, what the number is. But is that something we need to take care of for the following school year? Because then that puts us at a deficit for next year.
So it's, it's definitely something we have to plan for coming up for FY fifteen. Uh, and looking at different ways that we can use existing resources that may be used differently, uh, as well as some new staff.
Do we get that in the budget or are budgets open?
It will, I know.
Our, our budget's already built, but we're looking at different ways that we're gonna reorganize or, or have the resources to do.
And there's no additional state funding or anything grants that you can get?
No, no, there's, there's, this is a, they are considered residents. Uh, you know, in other communities, uh, they're struggling with the homeless population, for example. And, um, you know, and, and that's been a huge issue for many of my colleagues. Uh, and it, and this is a similar type of issue because these contracts just got ratified in December. So the numbers have started to percolate since December.
How much effort would it take for us to expand the SRO to a full-time SRO? And I almost wish I wasn't asking that question out in the heels of what we just discussed because I don't want it to be inferred that that's why I'm asking. But from the time we started talking, or you, before I came, started talking about an SRO, I always thought it was a little bit strange that it was a, a part-time person. And I can't imagine if there's an, if there is enough of a, of a need that you feel there, there is to have a part-time one, why not just have a full-time one? And does that, I think, require going back to the towns? Or is that something?
It's still in our budget now.
We decide to take.
We, we have to talk to the town of Bolton, they have to make a decision as to whether or not they can afford to release somebody for another half-time.
I mean, I, I don't know why we wouldn't.
That may be, that has an interest into our conversation, but it may be a piece of the puzzle.
I think it should be. I mean, it's not just a gift because.
It's for the whole community.
It is, we have three towns, we have, you know, that, I think, that, I think, from what I'm hearing and what I was told, the administration, and I'm not talking about Dr. Graham, all right, the staff is taxed. The staff is taxed with some of these bigger restraining issues that they have, that they have. So would a SRO help in those situations or does an SRO?
He may not, he, he might assist in a, in a restraining situation, but there might be other ways that you could involve an SRO that could be relief to the administration and to other staff, personnel that work on different issues in terms of helping kids adjust to the high school.
So is that something we can start the conversation on now or is that something?
Oh, we already are, I mean, we're.
For a full-time?
Oh, for SR, it's a more comprehensive conversation than just looking at that as a piece of it, but it may be a piece of it.
I think it would be really nice if that were to become a consideration, that we had some way of evaluating how effective.
Right, and that's part of what we're looking at now.
The current SRO is even at halftime. I mean, we've only had, sorry, a year, well, not even a year, but, um, i- is there a tangible difference between last year and this year? And can we quantify how this has helped or how it hasn't helped? I don't know if that's possible, but to me, that seems like an important part of that conversation. You know, do we expand it or do we first figure out if it's working?
Well, or if it's other things like enrichment programs or, you know, community involvements.
Have to be.
It's gotta be a comprehensive.
It just might not be that, might not be where the money is really best spent. Maybe it's somewhere else that, 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 you know, because look at all the programs we have for the eighth graders. We have real programs to help that group of kids come into our school. We need the same type of, for any student, doesn't matter where they come from.
Right, and that's what, that's actually how we've tried to approach it. What does intake look like at our high school? And no matter where the student is coming from.
We just have this, we're having a bigger intake.
Exactly.
But it's, it's for any kid.
It's for any student.
It's how do you assimilate?
Right, exactly.
And it's our job to make sure that it's done well.
Right, and that's our first approach.
What kind of programs does RFK have? Do they have any or are they just giving beds and mail?
So they have a variety of programming, um, they, and there's a school on campus. It's a special needs school. Many of the students that might come to, to live there are not special needs. Uh, and so it's not an appropriate placement for them.
So would it make sense, instead of developing a program at the high school, going there and making a program there to help transition them in?
Again, it's a special needs school, so many of these kids do not have special education programs, so they, they can't go there.
But they're sleeping.
Right, they're, they're.
They're with the.
RFK is a, is a complex, is a, it's a campus. There are, there are, there's a residential center, there's a school, there's, you know, a, a function hall. I mean, there are a lot of different components of what they do there, uh, so.
So the students that come to the high school, they just sleep there either?
Yes, well, they get other kinds of social services there as well, counseling, other program supports.
So would it make sense to work with them?
Well, we are, we are.
Before they come into the school or?
It depends on when they can, sometimes they don't get any notice. Sometimes they, they just arrive and the way that DCF works or DYS works, they, we have, and, and what the law says is we have to have them in school. And so RFK is wonderful to work with, they've been very, uh, supportive of the issues that they know where we experience. They are experiencing them in some cases too because, again, the lack of notice. Um, so, you know, we're, we are very much a team in terms of how we're trying to address some of the things. And they're very cooperative in terms of, um, you know, working with us if we have to pose to an actual program and ask if we stay, it has to be at the home as opposed to in our school. Um, so they're very cooperative with us.
I think you explained to me once that often these kids just show up and you don't have any history, any paperwork, and then an incident happens and you get, next week you have the thing that says, you know, this kid probably shouldn't be in the group classroom. And, but there's nothing we can do about it because we have to take the kids as they come. And how to fix that system.
Exactly, and, um, yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a very challenging circumstance uh, in terms of communication. Um, I would love to see DCF be a much more of a partner in this. Uh, they're coming at it very much from their own vantage point in terms of what their needs are.
What are their, what do they say their needs are?
Well, their needs are to find a placement that's safe for their, for the individual and stops there.
And that's it?
And that's it.
So you mean as far as give us some history, give us the paperwork?
Yeah, work.
Give us something.
Give us something, give us some time.
So that we can be as effective as possible for these kids.
Exactly, exactly. But it's, it's, it's not just them, I mean, that's federal and state law. I mean, so there are, there are elements of that. But there's, there are ways that as, you know, as folks who are supposed to be in social services, all of us, we can figure out how to create a wraparound service model that makes sure that kids aren't hurt in the process in terms of putting them in environments that they're not gonna be successful and, and that's gonna have their attitude.
Limit.
Off it. Good work.
Okay, I think the next thing on our agenda, and I went off tangent, but it was, uh, a good conversation. Ask of it Valley Collaborative Capital Account?
Yes, so, um, we are, we, we being the collaborative, uh, are trying to establish a capital reserve fund. Uh, and the line short of it is, as the letter explains, uh, we need a vote from each of the school committees of the schools, uh, making up, Ask of it Collaborative, uh, so to essentially, um, allow for twenty-five thousand dollars to be set aside in the FY fifteen budget, uh, and to hopefully do that annually because our goal is to get to seven-hundred-and-twenty-two, uh, seven-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand-five-hundred dollars uh, over time as a reserve fund for capital projects. So what I'm asking tonight is for the school committee to make the motion to approve the capital project reserve fund in the amount of, submitted in the amount of seven-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand-five-hundred and preliminary funding for it in the amount of twenty-five thousand as part of the FY fifteen budget.
I have two questions. Um, if we get out of the Ask of it Valley, do we get any of this money back?
That's a great question. Uh, there, there is a process, uh, for getting out. I don't know what amount of money we would give back.
Do we have to go on this now without knowing what are, what are those?
I can ask that question.
And the, the collaborative is putting aside twenty-five thousand, not each district?
That's right, this is not our budget, this is the collaborative's budget.
So out of their entire budget, they wanna take twenty-five thousand?
Correct.
And so if we're giving, uh, ten percent of their overall budget, we'd be basically giving ten percent of that twenty-five thousand.
That's correct, that may be, uh, there are eleven school systems that are part of.
So it's twenty-five by eleven. And then at the beginning, there's something about a school when I was reading it.
Right, so, so, uh, the Ask of it Valley Collaborative has a long-term lease from the city of Marlboro for the school that they, they run, we run, uh, and they, they have several programs there.
And what is that?
So that's a special education school. Uh, they have a behavioral, uh, for, a school for emotionally, uh, well, sort of children. Uh, and, uh, they also run a middle school for behavioral interference. Out of that building, out of that one building.
You're looking for approval tonight for a sum of money that might be less than three thousand dollars.
Right, and again, this is not out of our budget at all. This is basically saying, we're, we're, we're agreeing, you're agreeing, that in their budget, they can set aside twenty-five thousand dollars for it. So this has nothing to do with our budget.
Every year. Mark, does this year?
It will be every year, uh, going forward, yes.
Do they operate differently? Because I thought we couldn't do that. Because we don't have a capital allotment budget set aside.
Well, we, we have to get permission from all three towns to establish a stabilization fund.
Exactly, and so.
And I thought that was a limit, I, I thought, because we, we talked about this before, but there's, there's a cap number or something.
I saw E and D is five percent.
That's just the E and D.
Right, so this body.
There may be a capital stabilization fund too, but we need to fund the stabilization fund, which essentially is a savings reserve account without permission for all three towns to do so.
Why wouldn't we do that to start saving money for the new school that we will need at some point in life?
Because the towns would probably say, we don't want to give up control of that one.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's the challenge we have, I mean, I don't even, we, we get feedback on the E and D, which I, I don't think is based on, you know, reason, but we do get feedback on it, so.
Okay.
So, so the same process actually does apply. You're, you're, you're their towns that they're getting the vote from. You're the bodies, uh, you know, governmental body.
And this is money they already have?
This is money they already have, it's already part of the FY fifteen budget. Uh, the board has not approved the budget until this can get approved. You can read, if you read that one that's there, at the bottom of that page, it's actually.
I move that we vote to approve the capital project reserve fund submitted in the amount of seven-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand-five-hundred dollars and preliminary funding for it in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars as part of the FY fifteen budget for the Ask of it Valley Collaborative.
Second.
I have a quick question. Are you agreeing to this, are we increasing our budget to them by that amount of money every year? No, this is their budget. So that's not gonna become a line item?
No, this has nothing to do with any of the individual towns respectively.
But will our, will our fees be increased?
Nope, because they're, um, we have a set fee, it's five thousand dollars. Um, and, um, most of their budget revenue, uh, the majority of it actually, is from non-resident members who send kids to, to our programs. Uh, so as long as that continues, that's, that's, there's bread and butter for revenue.
So non-residents are the people that are outside the class?
Correct.
All those in favor? Next on our agenda is the superintendent's evaluation. I'm not sure that we're ready to proceed tonight. Um, and, um, if there's anybody in here who objects to this idea, I'm going to suggest that we push this working session off to our next meeting for a couple of reasons. One, not everybody was able to do superintendent's evaluation, which is kind of homework that we needed to have done before we could collaborate. Um, and two, uh, it was a little confusing. We weren't all sure exactly what we were supposed to do and where we were supposed to find the materials. So Michael's gonna put together a little helpful memo for us so that, to help us get through this a little easier, right?
Yep.
And, um, and we'll try again next time.
May sixth.
May sixth. Um, and we want everybody to actually fill it out on their computer and hit submit.
Correct.
correct?
Correct.
We do want to submit. I thought we were just printing it out.
Yeah.
I printed it up.
Part of the confusion, I wasn't sure. I submitted it because it said submit at the bottom.
Right.
So will you be able to do it again, once you get the write-up?
Yes, yeah, you can, you can go in as another person and disregard the first one or something.
Okay, so just don't write your whole name.
Give me two notes.
It's my whole name.
I can reset it too.
What's that?
I can reset it too.
Oh, okay.
So did everybody bring printed copies?
Yeah.
Does that change?
No, I think the write-up is good because I don't know a lot of them.
Yeah, I think we had a lot of-
I know, a lot of us, I can't answer. I think a lot of people said, I can't answer this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Even, I've been trying to go through some of the documents that are attached, and I don't understand what the document is saying to me either. So I'm sorry it's good evidence, but I'm sorry, this is my first time.
What is an evidence?
Yeah, and I'm just not as good at it yet.
I figured that, that was going to be a part of the conversation piece, but, but I can speak to that. I'll write more about that.
Do you have enough feedback from us now to know what it is we really need, or?
Unless there's individual things people want to be, to, if you have individual questions about evidence that you did, you would like to see, and I can make sure that's linked specifically.
If you could just link, if you write a list of what the attachments are, and what goal number it is referring to, that would be really helpful.
So-
Maybe how you're disproving or proving your point.
There is an evidence board by goal, and it has the, not all of the links, but I linked a couple of things in each under one that didn't want to overwhelm you, but I can do it that way as well, put it in the document for you.
That would be awesome.
Yeah.
All right, so that's good, because-
So, no, let's just be clear. Are we submitting, or are we bringing in paper copies next time?
It would be best if you submitted, so that we can show you what your cumulative information is.
Okay, okay.
That was what I thought we were supposed to do, which is why I frantically tried to do something, because I, that was my understanding, was that we needed to submit so you could collate it, then we're going to discuss, but we should write our comments ahead of time so that we would have our own independent opinions and not just be swayed by whoever talked or directed.
I got this. All the paint, the colors.
Okay.
So I think our shirt is cute.
I wish, no, mine.
No, no, no. It's really good. It's totally different than what we've done in the past.
Yes, it does.
It is totally different than what we've done in the past. And I think that in the past, frankly, it was a little more straightforward. I mean, it was more easier to-
Right.
Definitely.
To decipher what it was exactly.
I thought that this new format was tricky.
Yeah. So I think taking a little more time to digest it and have everybody submit what their comments are, and then we can try to synthesize it next time.
Right. Because when you do the submit, what we get are essentially graphical, you know, graphics of all the results, so you can see it by image, and then all the comments are bulleted below it. That create the paragraphs, you know, so.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, that was a great call.
Okay.
Okay?
So, yes.
So I will go back in, I will create a document that follows the format, and I will put the links in there-
Oh, yes.
-of the evidence right in, in those standards that you could look at. And then if you individually have questions about the evidence, it'd probably be best that you email me or contact me, so I can talk you through it, because I know some of the evidence is, you know, data sheet, you know, what does that help you understand?
And is that going to clarify for us whether or not some of these goals have been met? Because that was the mysterious part.
Well, I wrote in very specifically, I met this goal, I made significant progress, and here's my rationale behind it and so forth.
Okay.
Or I didn't meet it at all, like the one about the level one schools, the date isn't here yet, so I said I haven't met this yet.
So what do we do with that one?
I think we're just gonna have to-
Say it's not here yet.
It's not here yet.
Okay.
That's a lesson for us, for me, I'm not sure what goals that aren't here yet.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so everybody's fairly clear what we're gonna do? Excellent. Sorry for the confusion on that. All right, this says old business, but it still sounds new and exciting to me, the calendar. So, Michael, take it away.
So we had two proposals on the doc before, proposal A and proposal B. I had recommended proposal B, which pretty much mirrored what we, what we did this year. As Nancy said earlier, we are at a different place in our negotiations, and I feel confident that I can now give you a new proposal, proposal C, which addresses some of the concerns that we all voiced in proposal B, which had to do with the two early release days back to back, I mean, that we're going to experience next year. So let me just walk you through this, and I'll point out how this is different from B and A. A was the committees, the calendar committees' representation of trying to move away from what was in the contract, but I took that into account in making this proposal as well. So we would start again in August with teachers coming back on 25th and 26th. The 25th is what we call a district day. The 26th is a school-based day, professional development for the teachers individually at their eyes, at their respective schools, it's run by the principals. So those are those two days. School would start on the 27th. We would again have an orientation for our freshmen. The upperclassmen come in the morning, we have freshmen come in the afternoon. So then we have September, we have one early release day on the 26th. We have October, we have a, and this is just a factor of all of the different holidays and other events that happen between October through December. What was an early release day, I've made a professional development day. This is the one that I'm pulling from the spring to put here. It really is better for us and how we program organizationally to front-load the learning that we need to have, and in this case, things like NIEAS would be better suited to have time before the visit, so I want to front-load as much time as I can in the first half of the school year. Then we get into this, into November, which gets chopped up because of Veterans Day and-
Can I stop? Do you have a no school, then a half-day, and then no school?
Yes.
Yeah, we do the two days together.
Yeah, I have the half-day, no school, no school.
Okay, yep. So this is parent-teacher conferences, so-
Do you clip up them, or no?
Well, we could do, so yeah, we could do early release day here-
Yeah.
And two days off.
And then have the two days here. We could do that more consistently.
Perfect, and it's Halloween.
It's Halloween parade. I know, what are you thinking?
Oh, this is-
I think we're the only town that does it, actually.
Really?
So then it's conferences, so the challenge would be, that's the night that they do the night conferences.
Not Halloween.
Right, exactly.
I guess you could do it before day, or the third.
So you get to the parent-teacher conference?
Yeah, you could do the conferences after PD.
They have the next day.
Have two conferences here, and then do PDD on the 4th.
Do the conference on the 4th first.
Perfect. So no parents on the 4th?
It's gonna be awkward, because it, we'll have to look at that before.
All right.
The E and D coming up.
We can figure it out. Their day might just have to start later in the morning, so they go later at night, because they're, they're not going to want to do a full day of conferences in the night.
It'd be relaxing, but, I mean, it would mean you couldn't plan.
Nobody's gonna go to school that day. I'm out of here.
The half-day Monday, we got so much.
Where are you going?
Anywhere.
We'll talk to them about it. Then we have Veterans Day, which is the 11th. The key here is that we want the 4th off, because our town clerks have asked for voting.
But on, on the key there, it looks like, I mean, since it's the same color, is it day off, or is it parent-teacher conferences? Because the town clerks do not want parent-teacher conferences, because that's still too much traffic and parking problem.
That's right. So right, right now, what we're gonna do is we're gonna make, as we just discussed, so the 3rd, so this will become red, and it will become an early release day.
Tuesday's the-
Monday will be the full day of parent-teacher conferences, and Tuesday will be the PD day.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay?
Now, is that Tuesday C, or is that a new one?
Yeah.
That's excellent.
And the 11th will be Veterans Day. It's always a Tuesday, can't do anything about it. Then we have November, Thanksgiving.
It's always a Thursday.
It's always the 11th. Oh, it's right. It disrupts the week, which is what I-
We have no control.
We have no control, either way, right. And then we have, get into December, we have one early release day in December to have the continuity there. Go into January, traditionally we've had one early release there, one early release in February. In March now, this is slightly different, we would be spreading out the conferences here, and we would have, I've had to finally decide it. So on the 13th would be an early release day here, and we would have parent-teacher conferences on the night of the 12th. They would come back to school in the morning, and then conferences in the afternoon on the 13th. And then on the 27th, they would have parent-teacher conferences in the afternoon on the 27th. That would take place of that April, two, two half-days back to work.
Right, you need the break in March.
And then in April, this would be an early release day on the 17th, just before the holiday. And then one on the 22nd, and one in June.
If we move the, the parent conferences back to March, because they're currently in April, what about that whole discussion we had not too long ago about the course recommendation levels?
Right, so now they're falling more within that time span.
Okay.
So if we stick to the timeline that we've, that we've been discussing internally, they should have the, roughly the final time for, for submission on the 27th, essentially, because this year was the 28th.
So would kids and their parents have their recommended levels in hand by their conferences on the 12th and 13th?
Yes, so our, our recommendation is to have those in, in parents' hands the week, essentially of, right here, in February, 23rd to the 27th, somewhere in that week.
Okay, great.
And that's my recommendation. We have the five days for no-school days that might get scheduled. That would bring us to the 19th, which is roughly where we are this year. So we would be-
Was the calendar committee consulted on this version?
Yeah, because we had it, but it's, it's very much like A.
What's, what's the difference between A and C?
So here's A.
This is much better.
Their version of A. So we have this, this same, just different, different colors, different uses, so we got back the 10th in version C. And then here, it was back-to-back early release on the 16th and 17th. So we've eliminated that.
Right, okay. So we just, going from A to C, we moved the holiday, or the, I'm sorry, the professional development day on the 10th of November to the 31st, although we're actually moving into the-
Moving it back to the 3rd.
To the 3rd, okay. And we took one of the April half-days and moved it to March.
Correct.
Okay. Any discussion, debates? People want to vote tonight?
Yeah.
People want this calendar. I get so many.
Yeah, oh gosh.
I'm sick of the calendar.
Since we have too many versions of-
His main line.
I'll give it a crack.
While you're doing it, I'll try to graphically make it happen.
Okay. I move that we accept calendar C with the change of a half-day on October 31st, and a professional development day on November 3rd. Is it a professional development day?
No.
It's the fourth.
Parent-teacher conferences on November 3rd, and a professional development day on November 4th. How do you know that the half-days have professional, parent-teacher conferences as a night? We just know. And everything else is as appears-
As appears on-
On version C.
And then I have to be prepared to go into it.
Anyone want a second now? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Wow, that was nice job.
It was our plan.
Data mom, there you go, girl. So this is comments? No. Then all we need is a final motion to get us into executive session. And I don't think that that will take very long.
No.
And we want to raise this up. Thank you, Maureen.
I did, even though I- I move that we adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing legal strategy with respect to possible litigation, and that in addition to the members of the school committee, the executive session will consist of Superintendent Wood, Assistant Superintendent King, Administrative Assistant Masterson, and at the conclusion of the executive session, we will resume our regular session for the sole purpose of adjourning the meeting, and no further business will be conducted at that time.
Thanks for that.
Lynn?
Yes.
Yes.
Kathy? Yes, yes.
All right.
Yes.
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 What's that?